This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome, everybody. This is the East Hampton City Council Public Safety Committee Subcommittee. It's October 8th, 6:00 PM. We're in conference room number one. The other members of the committee, Councillors Derby and Riley are here. So this meeting is called to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining, both virtually and in person. We have some minutes from last time. Pull those up. We have minutes from September 10th, 2024. These look in order to me, and great job as usual. Councillor Riley, thank you. Any comments about these at all? I'll take a motion to...
I'll just say typically I don't sort of do the narrative prose in minutes, but I just felt for the sensitivity of the topic for everybody coming out. I tried to keep as much of the narratives that people shared during public speak time in the record, so.
Well, it's exceptional. You absolutely struck a prose, so to speak. Thank you so much. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
All right, we have a motion from Councillor Derby, a second from Councillor Riley, all in favor. I mean, it's approved 3-0. Let me just switch back here. Next is public speak. We'll only, I intend to only be discussing the traffic on West Street today. So here are the rules for public speak. We'll have the people in person first, and then people virtually second. Each person gets three minutes. Introduce yourself, give your name and your address. You do not have to be an East Hampton resident. Anyone interested in this topic can speak. We will have one, as we do with full city council meetings, we'll have one opportunity for public speak, and that will be it. And then the councillors will discuss, as well as we have members, both of the Police Department, and we have Director Nudelman online to discuss this item, and we'll go from there. So without further ado, with a show of hands, anyone here like to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Michael Furman, 46 West Street, lifelong resident. I know we talked last time about speed humps and such on West Street, cut down the speeding. What I've also noticed, as I was mentioning out in the hallway to my wife and a couple of other people, is down the end of West Street by 143, it's actually 30 miles an hour going around the hill. On the other end of West Street, where you live, it's 25. What we could start with instead of speed humps is why not make the whole area except by that corner, leave that 25, but make West Street 30 miles an hour all the way through? That might be a start to slowing the speeding down. I know what the police officers down there, they have finally got the motorcycle out of speeding on West Street, but there are other cars that are still passing, like last night I noticed a BMW passing a car. You can't get everybody. I know you guys are doing the best. I appreciate that. But we just still need to do something, and maybe we can start with street signage, make it more uniform going down West Street. Well, thank you very much for the time.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Anyone else? One second, let me just reset my timer. Go ahead. Name and address?
Sherri Lee, 28 West Street. So I don't think that changing the limit is going to change the behavior. And I think that this behavior is, it's not just West Street, it's everywhere, not in East Hampton, but, you know, based on the work that I do, we're seeing an increase, we've been seeing an increase post-COVID of high-speed traffic accidents because people are just blatantly disregarding for the law. And they, on our street, it almost seems like they're confrontational about it. They're, the average speed is, I don't know, past my house, I'm in the 25 zone, is 40 to 50 miles an hour on the regular. And we can't ask the police to be babysitters, so we need to build things into the road. I mean, these guys are not babysitters, and they're in danger, especially when they pull people around on that corner. Their lives are at risk. So if they're out of their vehicle and they're writing a ticket, and somebody comes flying around that corner, that scares me. I don't like that. So why can't we do, there's no, there's no lane lines, there's nothing to make that road seem less wide? Like make it seem more narrow, a lot more signage, maybe warning them that, you know, radar's in use. But I think speed, it's got to come to speed bumps or rumble strips, something. And I'm watching North Hampton kind of address the issue and be really proactive. They have bike lanes everywhere, they're painting crosswalks everywhere, they've improved their paint on their roads. And we're kind of like, meh, either we don't have the money, but why do we have to ask these guys? They have other things to do. Like they're not babysitters for speeders, they're not. And I don't want to think about them getting hurt. So I've been kind of like, well, people are going to speed, they're going to crash into something when the ice is on the road. You know, but I also, I don't want to take my dog across the road, I don't want to walk across the road. I'm worried now that I moved my mailbox to the end of the street, I'm like, oh, right, now I'm in the line of traffic. Sometimes I feel like I'm just going to die. And then if the town doesn't do anything about it, it's kind of like, oh, well, thoughts and prayers. I don't feel like it's their responsibility, like we need to put structure in place of asking these guys to risk their necks to stop speeding.
That's all. Thank you as usual. I see that there's a hand up online. We're going to get to everyone in person first, and then, and then go to the people online. Anyone else in person? Yes, name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Caroline Foley. I live at 143 West Street. I'm a pretty new resident to East Hampton. I've lived at that house for about a year. I feel like a lot of people are already saying a lot of the stuff, people fly by on the regular 40, 50 miles an hour. So that's definitely, I've had my mailbox hit, I've only lived here a year, already had to replace my mailbox because someone hit it. So I mean, I don't know what the solution is, whether it's really reducing it. I'd go down even 25 for everywhere because inevitably people are going to go above it. So 25, you know, 10 miles an hour probably is typical for most people. So maybe we'd get some people to drop down. I don't know if, you know, adding some sort of like speed hump would be an issue. The other concern I have, which I haven't heard addressed, is, well, you kind of were bringing it up. So I'm in an area where there is no sidewalk, and I'm definitely concerned. I have a dog, I don't feel comfortable walking, I see children walking home from school. There isn't even like a line, like a white, the white line on the side of the road. So I feel like there, whether, it doesn't necessarily need to be adding a sidewalk, but something to protect pedestrians. Because especially when people fly by, I walk sometimes at night, I have, my dog has something on her, I have a flashlight, but I still get nervous sometimes, and there are certain times I will not walk my dog because there are just too many people. So I think that that would also be a concern, not only, not, not just the speed, but something for pedestrians as well, especially in the area where there's no sidewalk on either side of the street.
Thank you. Anything else you have? Another minute?
That's it.
I'll talk.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here in person would like to speak? We have Tanya Tiscus online. Just name and address?
Ponytiscus, 94 West Street. I agree with what Michael said earlier about making the speed limit consistent. The, I am on the stretch that's 35 miles an hour, I've been looking at the signs lately. And I don't know if dropping to 25 is really practical based on the kind of road it is, but there are sections in South Hampton on my way to Westfield that, there's like a section that's 25 that's near like a farm. And sometimes there are 25 mile an air, mile an hour areas. And I do know what Caroline's talking about, I think that was what your name was. That area, like if you're trying to walk down that side of West Street without the sidewalk, and that corner feels very dicey when you're going around that corner especially. And I definitely would like to see some improvements. You know, we have, our mailboxes have been hit too. Cars that were parked just, you know, on the side of the street visiting us have been hit. And we've lost a couple of pets too. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else online, so we're going to close public speak. Thank you for everyone's input. That's very valuable, and I just want to say that this is all heard. We hear you, and we take this very seriously. So I just wanted to see if there's any preliminary thoughts from the members of the committee before I turn it over to our members of police and Public Works for comments at all. Preliminary, I mean, we went through this last time, but I know that we've had some time in between. If there's anything else you want to share before I have PD and Public Works present?
No, I think that's fine. I'll withhold any opinions or thoughts that I have once I hear from everyone. Thank you.
I think just a couple of things, you know, I would love to hear from Greg when he, when he comes on about what kind of options we have for putting lines down on West Street and, you know, narrowing the traffic. I think that is going to be probably one of the most effective traffic calming things. I also would like to also bring us back to what we talked about before, which was potential crosswalk. I think it was between, my glasses, Searle and Meadowbrook in that area. And if, and if we were able to get a crosswalk there, like maybe we could do a raised one, so it's like it's an automatic speed bump, you know, just, and that's kind of mid-road. I don't know if that would be helpful too. And I think eventually we need to talk about, like, what does it look like to, you know, with the increased density there and the access to downtown, extending sidewalks, you know, to the Loudville intersection, what would that look like? And what kind of state grants or federal grants are available to do something like that? So that's, I just wanted to put that out loud before we move on. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, I mean, my only thoughts, having kind of driven back and forth on that road many more times than I normally do, just to try to get more of a feel for it, and with keeping in mind that, you know, we can't have police out there on details all the time, as, you know, they, they need to be in multiple other places being. So at least my preliminary thoughts, that I would defer to our experts, is that we need to figure out mitigation strategies, whether that's narrowing the road or other traffic calming measures. And like I said last time, these are all great thoughts that we have. We've all clearly done our research and what has been employed in certain places, we have to figure out what works here. So I'll, I'll, just because you're, you have to be sitting next to me, I'll turn it over to PD first just for their thoughts about this, and then we'll get Director Nudelman to, to share his ideas, so. Mr. Grabner?
Interim Police Chief Dennis Grabner. I drive that road every day, living in the general area, so I'm very familiar. I've also been paying a lot of attention to signage and what seems to work and what doesn't seem to work lately. So just a couple of points that I would make. I 100% agree, and I'm no expert, but that the fog lines on the road end on the high end of West Street near, in the area of 143 prior to that, and then there's nothing for the remainder of the stretch to Route 10. So I do think that, as we, as everybody's pointed out, that the narrowing of the travel lane has a, you know, a positive effect generally on people's perception of how fast they're going and being a little bit more cautious. And I think it also gives way to an established bike lane, you know, on either side, and just some, some distance between sidewalks and the side of the road from motorists. So I do agree with that. I, there's a sign that bothers me, that's a 35 mile an hour sign, and it's in the general area of, let's say 47? Yeah, it's in the 40s. So I clocked the distance from the 35 mile an hour sign, which is the last thing you see going into the 25 zone before a fifth of a mile down the road, it now drops, but you're already going 10 over. And so I think that having our mobile speed boards out there is drawing more attention to the, the speed limit change, but, you know, we get requests for those all over town. And we've left it there for an extended period of time and actually installed the second one down the street. But if there's a way to explore grants for solar-powered signs to affix there, I think that would be exceptionally helpful. And in the meantime, you know, again, I'm not an engineer, I'm not with Public Works, but I think doing something with that 35 mile an hour sign, such as removing it and putting a reduced speed ahead sign would be a lot more effective. It eliminates some confusion.
Nick Collins? I agree. I have family building on West Street and getting out of their driveway, it's almost been hit, just going over to visit. And ours, yeah, everybody's going somewhere 35 to 45, and even our data has shown the majority of cars are between 35 and 45. Going off the chief's points about fog lines, I think, just to start, if DPW could put fog lines and narrow up the road, I've noticed, just from the limited amount, I'm not on patrol anymore, but Hoyoke Street, when they redid Hoyoke Street years ago, and Mountain Road, I think it's probably been 15 years, right after it was paved, every neighbor, like, this is nothing, you had every neighbor going berserk about the speeds because fresh pavement, mile, mile and a tenth long, it was crazy. Just with those fog lines narrowed, I've noticed such a difference, and the speeds are much lower than when you get a fresh coat of pavement, especially on a long straight street. That's probably our most heavily traveled street. So whoever did that, I think, knew what they were doing, and I think that'd be a perfect start for the cost of pain, if that's allowed. That's unfortunately, we're just the enforcement of it, we're, we don't get say in speed limits and anything else. We just are told, speed limit 35, if they're going over, write a ticket, that's unfortunately. But I think the fog lines would be a great start, and then I'll defer to the DPW superintendent. I don't know anything about speed humps or any of that.
Thank you. Do either of you have questions for the PD? I'm sorry.
No, no.
My only question, I mean, it depends what sources you look at, and I appreciate you brought up the potential of a more permanent electric speed sign or two, because that's certainly been a thought of mine. Especially the companies that sell these, you know, purport that they, that they are effective. And I've also read some independent research as well, it seems to demonstrate that they do reduce average speeds. Do you feel that they're effective? I do.
I would say yes, just from over the years, and I think every time we put them up, neighbors, the, the happiest day with us is when we put them up, and the most they're mad at us is the day we have to take them down, move them to the next neighborhood, because they, and whether it be genuinely seeing a difference, or I think just the fact that people are, let's face it, there's so many distractions when you're trying to drive down the road these days between phones and radios and everything else. People aren't paying attention, plus cars these days, you don't even realize how fast you're going, the way they're built. So somebody goes, and when they see something flashing at them, they, oh my God, I'm 145, without even realizing it, it forces them to slow down. So I think that helps. Yeah.
I just, I think the idea of moving that 35 sign is a good idea, because, I mean, I imagine there's probably another 35 sign that, I mean, if you move that back, you know, a half mile down the road.
It's right at Oliver's. It was one right in front of my house.
That's the one I'm talking about.
10 years ago, yes.
Yeah.
Jimmy put it in.
I think it's particularly close to the 25 sign, and it's a little bit deceptive. That's, this is my opinion.
It makes sense to have a reduced speed ahead and move that one down so people know that's 35 down there, if they're not changing.
Right. But there is a 35 sign in the area of Oliver Street.
Yeah, in the northbound lane, so it's kind of redundant, and there's, yeah.
Director Nudelman, thank you for joining us. Obviously very eager to hear your thoughts on this item, if you're willing to share with us.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So we don't, I think the fog lines are an excellent idea. I mean, we, we did this, we did them on Hoyoke Street, we did 10-foot lanes out there, Clark Street. I think Clark Street's 11-foot lanes, but they do, they have shown to make a difference. So thing is, we don't do that with our own equipment. We have a contractor that comes into the city about once a year. They are due to come back in the next few weeks to get fog lines down, they're going to be doing Loudville Road. So we'll have them pick up right there by 143 West Street, and then taper them in a little bit, get at least, at least an 11-foot lane in there, hopefully maybe a little narrower, but let it, get a good look at that curve and what the best, that's what best width to put in out there is. I think the Police Department made some great suggestions about what we can do regarding signage and getting, getting it posted properly out there with, I have to look at the traffic rules and ordinances and make sure there's not anything special about the exact speed limits, what they're supposed to be on throughout the length of West Street, but I think 25 is probably a reasonable speed limit to have posted out there. Councillor Derby brought up some great points there about getting a crossing in somewhere in the area of Meadowbrook Drive. Main challenge with that is we don't have any sidewalk on the, I think it's going to be the even side of West Street, so there's no area of refuge for pedestrians on, on the opposite side. There's also no sidewalk on that section of Meadowbrook Drive. So if we were to put a crossing in there, it would, it would have to go to just an ADA ramp that just went down and then put a pedestrian on a Meadowbrook Drive, which would be, certainly be a great improvement. But things like that aren't necessarily built into the DPW's O and M budget, and they require an appropriation through the city council and permission of the mayor's office to, to, to set up that appropriation and then fund that expenditure. So it's hard for us to make, especially mid-fiscal year, it's very difficult for us to make improvements of that nature with, you know, with that kind of price tag on them. Set of RFBs there without a raised crossing and two ADA ramps, we'd probably be in the area $30,000 to $40,000. It's just how expensive these, these small public construction projects are. An RFB alone is about $20,000, so by the time you get the ramps in, it's, it just turns into a much larger expense. So, and I did hear a couple of neighbors mention doing some speed humps. Also, you know, maybe, maybe something worthwhile to look at, but another large expense. I mean, one, two speed humps out there would probably be in the area of $50,000. And then, you know, the neighbors that ended up with them right in front of their homes would have the constant acceleration and deceleration noise from the vehicles. So you kind of trade off one problem for, for another one. But I think, you know, in the short term, getting the fog lines painted out there, narrowing up the lanes, adjusting some signage, and sure, if we could find the funding somewhere for a solar-powered speed feedback sign, I was just able to secure a grant last year for the, the two we got on Park Street for the new school. So, you know, those opportunities to grant fund expenditures like that are out there. It's just a matter of trying to find them and align them with the right neighborhood, so.
Great, thank you. Questions for Mr. Nudelman?
Greg, thank you. I appreciate that. I think, you know, one of the things that I would ask is, when is, is, when was the last time West Street was repaved?
Well, repaved? Well, that's going back.
When I was 15 years old.
Yeah, I, I think West Street may have like a, like a, we call it fog seal, like similar like an oil and stone sealant on it, and it's been crack sealed, it's not in terrible condition, but it wouldn't be at, you know, too close to the top of our paving list at this point.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, because I was thinking about the fresh pavement. But I was also thinking about sidewalks. You know, it sounds like there's, there is definitely a lack of sidewalks there, and the process of new sidewalks, or maybe strategically placed sidewalks. I guess I just, I was just was interested in floating that. And I imagine that there would be a complex process of, you know, property interactions and, and then.
Right away.
RFP. You know, but do we have a master list of places in the city that we think could benefit from sidewalks because of their proximity to downtown or anything like that? And maybe that's a question more for planning. But I, obviously, I think DPW would be involved with that, but do you know of anything like that right now, or?
Not a master list of sidewalks, I mean, our, you know, we have sidewalk investments across the city that need to be made. There are sidewalks significantly closer to downtown than, than Meadowbrook Drive or West Street are that are in, you know, deplorable condition and nowhere near today's ADA standards for sidewalks, so. And it really, it all comes down to what, what we have available for funding and what we can, and we try to stretch every dollar we get as far as we can. In the last, last few years, we were able to leverage funding we had left, and we paid Main Street and get the sidewalk replaced down South Street to the rail trail, and you may remember that appropriation coming through. So like every opportunity we get to do something like that, if we can squeeze the dollars to, to make it work, you know, we do it. It's just a situation such as this, where we have sidewalk on one side but not the other, and we'd have to look at right away and then takings of land, and then, you know, you know, the costs associated with appraisals and things of that nature to get that to happen, and then the construction of the sidewalk itself, it's a, be very, it'd be a heavy lift to get sidewalk installed out there on, on the opposite side from where it is now.
Well, I knew, you know, I knew it was a big ask, and that's why I knew if anybody could get that done, that would be you, so.
No, believe me, I wish we had a larger, a larger pile of money that, to, you know, you know, utilize for, for a lot of this stuff. It's just not, it's just not the case. I mean, it's just the cost of construction projects now are just, things are getting more and more difficult to manage to try to stretch things through. We're, you know, super fortunate this year with the paving we have happening on the remainder of Hoyoke Street and Mountain Road that Mass DOT is picking up just about 100% of the cost of that. So, you know, we were looking to roll some Chapter 90 money for a few years and had a budget number in mind of $1,002,000 to finish that project out to the Hoyoke Line. So, because we took it, we took it as far as Allen Street. I believe that was in 2022.
Thank you.
Director, did you, did you float the idea of reducing the speed along the entirety of, of West Street to 25? Did I hear that correctly, or?
I, I think that's a reasonable speed limit for that road, 25. We'd have to take a little bit more of an educated look at that, but I don't, I don't think it needs to be a 35 out there. Especially if we narrow, once we get the lanes narrowed down, it'll just be, it'll, it'll, you know, that'll give that narrower appearance, and people will be probably even more comfortable driving at 25. But like I heard, I heard someone comment on just controlling human behavior, it's impossible. I mean, it's just the things you see working in the road and being, I mean, just today, I almost got hit in my city car with all the lights flashing on Pace and Avenue because someone came around the corner from Park Street, crossed the yellow line, and just was driving way too fast for the area. But I don't know how to, you know, how to control that, but it just seems there's no, engine, no amount of engineering control can overcome, you know, some, the way someone wants to behave. So we just can do what we can and try to stretch every, all of our resources as far as we can.
Well, we were talking last time about some mitigation strategies around some of the areas where people were worried about cars literally driving on the sidewalk, and I would imagine if there were fog lines along the entire length, at least that gives a visual cue not to, to kind of stay away from there. So that seems like a pretty instant opportunity for an upgrade, as well as looking at reducing the, the speed there. I think based on what you said, I would probably just want to wait until you gave more of a thumbs up for us to, to vote on that and make that recommendation. The reduced speed ahead sign, is that, well, I guess that might be a moot point. If we, if we determine that we're going to reduce the, the speed along the entirety of the road, that we don't have, you don't have to worry about that. So maybe, how long would you think it would take to kind of make a determination about the wisdom of just reducing the speed along the entire length?
Two to three weeks, I'd say. We got a lot of other stuff we're kind of working through right now, and we're short an engineer, so. Always takes us a little bit of time, but.
No, and we really appreciate if, I mean, you could, you literally could see at any given day the hard work that your department does, we appreciate that. So, so it sounds like we have one instant solution with fog lines. How much do the solar feedback signs cost generally?
Depends on the brand. We've bought some solar signs that didn't hold up very well, so I kind of would have to, you know, go to a heavier, a better, a more expensive, I guess I should say, because some, some instances you get what you pay for, but right in the area of $10,000 to $15,000.
Is that something you'd be comfortable at least trying to put in a appropriation request for? Or is there so much backup on other items where we already have prioritization over other projects where it might get tricky?
Well, sometimes expenses like that, as we get to the end of the fiscal year and we don't have, have, if there's a little, some money left in the budget, we can squeeze something like that in. So that would probably be the way I would try to do that come April or May. But I can't speak to what kind of issues or challenges we'll run into in the meantime that we have to get through, just to get the city through the fiscal year. Our budgets aren't built with a lot of extra room in them to, to do things. I know it may sound like... to do things. I know it, I, it may sound like th- this, th- they're really there to, to get the city through the year. Like the money will be there to paint the fog lines because we already have a contract and it's not, it's not a huge distance to add. So, um, it, the larger expenses are, are hard to kind of, um, do, especially in the middle of fiscal, middle of fiscal year.
No, no, I understand. I mean, I could just speak myself that if, if it were to come to the city council for thirty, forty.
I can only bring an appropriation to the city council that the mayor has signed off on. So she's really the person you have to ask that to.
Okay.
I'd be happy to bring it forward. I can just only bring what she will, what she will allow.
No, I understand that. I mean, is that, is that something you're willing to do? Or do you want to talk offline about that?
Um, I'd certainly be willing to. I mean, I have a number of other, um, expenses that are going to be, um, coming to the city council for uh, other things like our Main Street project. Uh, we need some money to finish design work on Emerald Place. I've got two trucks that we need to replace for the DPW, just to have our, um, our frontline vehicles ready for the snow. Um, there's a lot of a lot of competing priorities across the city, I guess I should say.
No, absolutely. We have, we have a lot of roads and lots of needs in all of them. So I, I understand that. That's why I'm trying to ask that in a way that's sensitive to all the needs of the cities, um, while respecting the conversation here. Um, okay. Uh, so it sounds like we have a, we have one immediate solution. Um, and potentially a few other things with the fog lines, a few other things ahead in terms of a potential for reducing, uh, the speed limit in, in its entirety and that along with uh, the fog lines might be helpful. Then we could also probably reevaluate with, uh, at least the remote signs you have right now to see what difference that's made. Thoughts?
Yes, I would just say let's, as a, as a deliverable. So, um, Director Nudelman, so that's a, a guarantee we can get the fog lines done for West Street. And what would be like the approximate time? Do you know that, that the?
It's hard to say. This line paintings heavily depend on the weather and air temperatures and, you know, crew gets some rain, they get moved around quite a bit. So it's been awfully dry. So, you know, maybe that'll work in our favor, but
Okay.
I would say within the next month, month and a half, we want to, definitely would want to get them down before we put any salt down on the road. So.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Um, and then in terms of, uh, two other options that I would say, um, that if we cannot do an appropriation, like if that seems, uh, not feasible, then I would like for any stakeholders engaged in the process to start researching for, um, you know, grants to, to get more signs. Um, you know, I have learned this very quickly, being a city councillor, that, uh, like Director Nudelman said, um, to just reconstruct a street is an unfeasible amount of money. Um, but I, I think if we can start to scaffold small mitigation steps, I think we can make progress. And then I, I think also in terms of talking about, you know, the human behavior aspect of people driving. Um, if people start to see more interventions being introduced into the street, then I think it creates a a larger narrative that this street needs to be more safe. Uh, so you know, seeing the lines going up, um, if we, you know, can get, uh, signs in place. You know, of course it, it's, it's not as easy as just being able to put a sidewalk in, but I feel like these things can start, um. I wish we had the money to just fix the entire problem, but, you know, it's just, it's an unbelievable amount of money. And I know for all of the benefits, uh, and the compassion that we have for prevailing wage laws for people that do construction, it certainly drives up the price. Um, anytime we hire people to do this kind of work for us. So, um, I feel pretty good, uh, with these as action items. Um, I would just say, since the public can't comment anymore, um, that if they have extra thoughts or feedback on what they've heard, you can email us. Um, we're very receptive to this, um, process. I feel like this is a good start, but I also want to hear what you all have to say. So offline, please contact us if you have any additional thoughts.
I, I think this is a good start. I, I think that we should, you know, circle back and see what kind of difference if, once the lines are down. I don't think we should give up on the idea of, you know, searching for a way to find other mitigation uh, approaches, whether that be speed humps or, and I also think crosswalk, it sounded like crosswalks were especially if you have kids walking to bus stops and whatnot, it makes sense to have at least, you know, uh, one strategically placed crosswalk somewhere. So I, I, I would like to, you know, circle back to that eventually.
Yeah, I completely agree. Um, sorry, anything? Yeah. So it sounds like we have a few things in play, uh, both in terms of painting the fog lines and evaluating the potential, the, the speed limits on that street. I think once those are done, uh, I think the next step would be, uh, maybe to request a sign to see where, where we are in terms of, uh, if there's a change of behaviors. And then we can come back here and talk about that again. Great. Um, I don't have anything else on the side of unless either of you do. Other than yes, please feel free to reach out, uh, between meetings. Um, our, um, uh, emails are, are, are easy to get off the, the website. Um, I know some of you have mine already. So. Okay. Um, like I, like I said, uh, too, I, I, I just want a little bit more time to go over the, the orders. So we can discuss that at the next meeting. Um, I will say, just as a kind of general, a general, uh, piece of information, uh, um, in terms of uh, infrastructure issues. Interim, uh, Chief Scribner and I, um, did I get your title correct?
Certainly did. Okay.
Uh, at the request of, uh, some members of the public met with the owner of, uh, Herb is the Verb, or Verb is the Herb. Uh, uh, whatever the, the name is of the, the dispensary on Cottage Street. Uh, not necessarily single them out, but there's been some concerns about, uh, um, both illegal parking as well as unsafe pedestrian practices there. Um, and I think it was a really productive conversation. Um, we're going to work on some ideas to address, uh, some of the issues with jaywalking there because we don't have a jaywalking ordinance. So, um, I know that's on, on the agenda. We're going to probably try to maybe bring something forward that's reasonable. Um, and, uh, we've worked on just a couple of mitigation strategies and that, I will say that, that that business owner, that he's entirely responsible, but, uh, was very receptive and eager to engage and and thoughts. He's already put notices up outside of his business and on his website to encourage people to park appropriately and cross appropriately. So, uh, that was a great meeting. Um, so, uh, that's it for me. If you, unless either of you two have anything else.
Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right. We have the motion of Council Derby and a second from Council Riley. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.